We call the Pleasant Ridge City Commission meeting of Tuesday, October 14th, 2014 to order. And we stand for the political meeting.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Foreman?
Here.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Here.
Commissioner Cleary?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here. Okay, the first item on the agenda is been moved up. It's for public discussion items not on the agenda. So anybody who has something to say, come forth, give us your name and address.
Mayor, City Commission, my name is Ted Zachary. I'm from 68 Devonshire. And I'm pleased to announce that we will be having a new environmental group. We'll be meeting on the third Monday of each month at 7:30 at Four Ridge here in Pleasant Ridge. So so far, the members of our group are myself, Ted Zachary, my wife Judy Zachary, Gail Girdon, and Leslie Jones. Well, we will be discussing environmental issues as they relate to our community and the world at large and here just in our streets. We will be hosting speakers, offering educational programs, brainstorming, and we invite all residents and friends to join us at our monthly meetings. And if you need more information, you can contact Leslie Jones at 19 Fairwood. The phone number is (248) 506-4754. And it seems strange to be back over here after being gone for nearly two years and being here 15 years plus, every month almost. And as you know, I like to do a little visual aid.
We missed that little light.
Yeah, so this is good.
We love your visual aids, Ted.
I would love to pull this for you.
My assistant. Now, you're probably wondering why I have this pumpkin here. This is an example of some of the brainstorming that we might do at our environmental meeting. People have asked me, what do I do with the pumpkin after the Halloween? So I tell them the best thing to do really is to take the seeds out of it, bake it and eat the seeds, but anyway. But what do you do with the remainder? You put this into the yard waste bin. That's the best way to do it. We could discuss reasons why, but it helps the environment. So have any questions? So remember, after Halloween, put your pumpkin in the yard waste bin.
Whatever the squirrels have left.
So unless there's any other questions, I thank you very much, and it's good to be back. And I have more sympathy for all those people who come up here than ever before. Thank you.
Good to see you. Ted, quick question.
Oh, just by the way, another visual aid, you could put these compost stickers on your yard waste bin if you wish. They're free here at City Hall.
Ted, a quick question. Your first meeting is this coming Monday?
Next, well, we had two meetings so far.
Oh, okay.
The next meeting is going to be the 20th.
20th.
The 20th, okay.
20th, Monday, 7:30 at Four Ridge.
Thank you.
Thank you. And everybody's welcome. Come with your ideas. Thank you.
Thanks, Ted. Anyone else? Come forth.
Fairwood Robby, Fairwood. So I don't know who came up with the new website, but I'm loving it, the Pleasant Ridge. It was great going to that homepage and had agendas right there and the flood stuff information right there. Been to the police, went to the departments, and they have the police department there and the little questions and answers. So I don't know who did that, but that was much appreciated.
It's been an evolution, but it's mostly Scott.
Yeah.
He deserves the credit on that.
That's great. So thank you.
Thanks, Rob. That just has us emphasize the fact that it needs people to go to the website. No, really, no, you didn't do that. But it does help us.
I stole your thunder.
No, no, it helps us push the website. If Rob likes it, obviously others will too. I heard that somewhere. Is there anyone else? Okay. The next item is consideration of governmental reports. I know we have several governmental reports. Gary is seated it to you.
He usually outranks me.
Does schools get number one?
No, and schools really should be number one. So I am not going to.
There you go. Okay.
So Karen Toomey, I am your school board liaison for the evening. And I did also want to let you know that I am running for another six-year term, so hopefully I will be with you for a while longer. I have some great speaking things that I want to share with you tonight. First of all, I want to make sure that everybody is well aware that we have many preschool options here inside the district, and it may seem to you like a strange time to share these. However, as a mother who with my first child found myself in a preschool that was not a good fit, it's always good to make sure that parents know that if they are reconsidering where they are, we always welcome you right here in Ferndale. So we actually run two programs. One is the Little Eagles Preschool, and the other is Grant Early Childhood Center. So Grant has limited openings for three- and four-year-olds in its Head Start and Great Start readiness programs. Both the Head Start and Great Start readiness programs are run together by highly qualified teachers with bachelor's degrees in early childhood development, and they provide a fantastic place for children to prepare for kindergarten, meet new friends, grow physically, socially, emotionally, and intellectually. And my own child went there. In fact, both my older children went there, so I can attest that it's quality. And the really wonderful thing about those programs is they are free. So those are of course to those who qualify. Then we also run a Little Eagles Preschool, which offers early childhood education based around comprehensive and rich research with the individual child in mind. This program offers full day and half-day programs as well as after-school care for children two and a half to four years old. And I know that that had been a question before, whether or not we had that additional care. So yes, you can get after-school childcare. You may have heard that our new superintendent has started hosting almost like your commissioner talks, coffee talks. We now have superintendent meets, and so he had his superintendent's advisory committee meeting last night. So if you regret having missed it, don't worry, we have other opportunities because on October 21st, I know it's going to be a challenge, but he's going to be meeting at Embrew. So anybody who would like to go to Embrew, have a drink with the kids in the basement to play on the arcade games, it should be a great time. So please, please, please. I know Superintendent Blake Pruitt really wants to make sure that he's meeting everybody. I'm sure that some people may want to come and share about their environmental ideas or anything else. So please come out and meet us. You may have also heard that we have a University High School sophomore who gets a charge out of solar engineering. Along with six other Metro Detroit middle and high school students, University High School 10th grader Kalen Riley has spent the last four months building a dune buggy and converting it to run on electric power at Next Energy in Detroit. The student's engineering effort fosters the growth of young talent and enables hands-on experience in STEM, which is of course science, technology, engineering, and math-related fields, collectively known as Run DC. The team members showcased their efforts at an event to drum up financial support to enable them to participate in the high school's solar car challenge in Texas next year. During the event, students spoke to the audience about what they have learned, demonstrated the vehicle technology, and presented a video they created about their typical day working on the vehicle. To my knowledge, I don't get to ride in the dune buggy as a person yet, but I'm going to keep working on that. GM Tech Center has donated 200 books to Roosevelt, so we're always really grateful for the sponsorship and cooperation we get from our corporations, our local businesses, and neighbors. So this year, the GM Tech Center sponsored a community volunteer effort. The employees selected to hold a book drive for students K-6 and chose our Ferndale Roosevelt. So the employees raised approximately 200 books for the children, and believe me, they are already going to good use. Ferndale High School's Jacob Keller, some of you may know him, won the league tournament at the number-one singles in the OAA Blue Division Tennis Championship, and so we're very proud of that. And I'm also excited about a new initiative we have going on. It is called the Michigan OK to Say Initiative, and that is to replace the culture of silence among students with a culture of collective responsibility. Statistics from the U.S. Secret Service show that in 81% of the violent incidents that happen in schools nationwide, someone else other than the attacker knew about the threat but didn't report it. With the new confidential tools provided by the OK to Say Initiative, we are empowering our students to help us keep our schools, our students, and our community safer. Students can make tips 24 hours a day, seven days a week, by multiple means. So lots of great things are happening, and I'm open to any questions. I do also want to thank everybody. I saw many of your familiar faces at the tailgate for homecoming, so that was wonderful. And I'm just so grateful that the community continues to come out and support us, and we're going to keep making you proud.
That was an excellent idea, too. Parade, the whole bit. Excellent.
The wonderful thing about that is it was the community's idea. No one person to take credit. That was something that I think was a community vision, and you could see that by all the sponsors that were there. So it was really remarkable.
It was great. Karen, when are the, I know you are up for election. When are the debates coming up so that people can see the different school board candidates?
So CFF has told us the date of October 25th, and I will have to get back to you with the details on time and location. That's the only one that they've started to schedule so far. So to review, it's Jen Latash, Nancar Mueller and I that are rerunning, and Keith Warnock from the former board is also on the ticket.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gary McGilvery, I'm your county commissioner. And I wanted to come tonight to report, and I'm sure you all heard it in the paper or on TV, regarding the water authority, the regional, Great Lakes Regional Water Authority. The county board voted to approve going into the board. And I don't want to make a long story here, but we had been negotiating for a year and a half or thereabouts. Before that, it was tied up in a court decision, and Judge Byton passed it down to Judge Cox, and finally he walked away from it. And then the bankruptcy in Detroit brought in the emergency manager. And the emergency manager was a little difficult to negotiate with, to say the least. He wanted to start out at $90 million a year for 40 years from the three counties, Oakland, Wayne, and Macomb. And he wanted to be able to take that $90 million and put it into the general fund in Detroit. We said absolutely not, don't, we didn't even need to talk anymore. And it got to a point that it was so ridiculous that we just kind of walked away from the table. And then there was a gag order put in, and they started negotiations again, but nobody was allowed to say anything, even though I sit on the water study board. It didn't matter, I wasn't allowed to know anything, but that's the way it works. And we finally, the reason the negotiation started back up again was Mayor Duggan in Detroit. He disagreed with Kevin Orr and said, you know, why would we take that $90 million, and now it's down to $50 million, but why would we take that and put it into general funds when our water infrastructure is falling apart? It just doesn't make any sense. We also got a cap of 4% increases. That's the most it can increase in any one year. That's good for the first 10 years of the authority board. So hopefully, a combination of the $50 million a year from the counties going into infrastructure, now that's Detroit, and infrastructure out here as well, it'll make a big difference. Water loss, for example, in Detroit is just unbelievable. I mean, 120 million gallons a day they lose in Detroit. Yeah, that's what I said, same thing. And I'm not quite sure how that happens, but a lot of it is because of the infrastructure that's in Detroit. They still have wooden water mains in some locations, so. So this will go a long ways to repairing a lot of those systems, and hopefully, rather than a 4% increase, maybe we might see a decrease. That'd be really nice. So that's where we're at, and it's going to take about probably a year to actually set up the board, and everybody has to do their due diligence as far as financials to make sure that we're in this, and then we'll move on with it and get a board set up, and hopefully we can get things rolling decently. Also, I'm up for reelection this year. Make sure you vote November 4th, and I appreciate your support. That's all I have.
I saw Macomb named their representative, and Brooks is going to name somebody in the next week or so?
That was our battle at the county, was some of us thought that it ought to be the county board of commissioners that appointed them. And instead, in Macomb County and Wayne County, it's the board of commissioners that does it, and our county, our county executive decided he wanted that job, so that's, it was kind of the difference there at the vote. That's why it was 18 to 2.
There you go. Okay, that was. Thanks.
Any questions?
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Well, thank you for being here.
Police chief's on his way, though.
Oh, is he? Okay.
I just have one quick thing. In my turn.
Yes.
Good evening. Just an update on the larceny from all the crime wave that we had, all four of them, whatever. I talked to you at the last meeting about the video that one of the residents had captured, suspect on video. We showed it to all area departments, nobody could identify that individual, and that was early September, a month almost to the day. One of our midnight officers observed a subject riding on a bike up to Sunoco at 4:30 in the morning. All the officers had been downloaded that video on their phone, so he goes, that looks like the guy that is our suspect. So he checked his phone and goes, yep, that's the guy, the same coat, different bike. Waited for him to come out, approached him. He had items with him and couldn't explain what he was doing there or how he obtained the items that he had on him. He did have a warrant out of another jurisdiction that was far west, Ann Arbor, no relation to the Michigan Wolverines, their boss. But so he arrested him on that, and later on that day, the bike got reported stolen from one of our residents, and then a laptop case and a bunch of other items. So we already had him in custody, so then we charged him, and I actually went to court with him this afternoon, and he's a habitual offender. He already had violated his probation for similar crimes, and he pled guilty to two out of the three charges that we have today. We still have more pending, but we're waiting for fingerprint evidence. Excuse me. And so that's really the only thing I have, so our crime wave temporarily has been solved.
Well done.
Yay.
But it was Officer Maggie, you'll see him later. But he was in the right place at the right time and recognized him, so I'll go with luck every time and darn good police work. Awesome. And that's all I have, that's why I was keeping it short.
I'm going to report a crime, someone stole your stripes.
They did. I had him on just about 20 minutes ago, you saw. I had to do a quick change.
I saw that.
Apparently there's something going on in about 20 minutes or something, so.
We have extremely observant residents.
We do.
They're always there, right on top of things.
He's hyped. That's all I have.
Just a quick comment. I'd like to thank all of our police officers for the great work, and also for the resident for capturing that video and making sure that they got to the police.
That was the key.
Great work.
Passing it on and then having it, being able to technol, I mean, I'm not a technological savvy guy. I just learned how to program my VCR the other day.
Good job.
And my kids will tell you what's a VCR. But being able to have that technology and download it on your phone and being able to retrieve it that quickly helps make our job a lot easier. So yes, the resident, and I had thanked him the last time, and thanks again for pointing it out, because he was the key.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it for governmental reports. The next item is consideration of the city commission liaison reports. Start with Commissioner Perry, planning and DDA.
Great. There was no planning commission or DDA meeting in September. The October planning commission DDA meeting will be held on Monday, October 27th at 7:00 PM at City Hall. This meeting of the planning commission will also be a public hearing for three proposed zoning ordinance amendments that our city manager can tell us about.
Yeah, we have, really it's two amendments, but there are three that have been forward. We've been struggling, I guess, with accessory dwelling units. These are those second-story garages that we have. Basically, our ordinance is silent on the issue right now, so we need to clarify whether that is permitted or not. So we're bringing forward two ordinances, one which would allow for those with an approval process by the planning commission, and another ordinance that would outlaw them. So we'll have both options on the table in front of us at the same time. Yeah, we brought one ordinance forward that kind of puts, you know, if you disagree with that, it puts you on the back foot, you know. Well, this is what the city wants to do, we want to allow these because, you know, there was no option to not allow them. So basically, that's why we're bringing forward two ordinances. The planning commission will consider them, recommend one of them, and then both of them will come to the city commission, and the city commission will consider them and ultimately approve one and deny the other. So that's the process. The other one is some dimensional standards that we're updating for setbacks for, I guess, Bigfoot housing. You know, it's a thing that many communities like us struggle with, so we're putting in place a couple of safeguards to minimize the threat from Bigfoot housing in town, trying to be proactive about that. So if you're interested in that, come to the planning commission or just wait until it gets to the city commission. You know, you'll have ample opportunity to hear about these in much more in-depth detail in the coming months.
Thanks. All right. Commissioner Scott, historical question.
Yes, wanted to thank Commissioner Perry for attending the meeting in my absence last week, I think it was, two weeks ago now.
It was lovely.
Yes. Just a couple of quick items. The first is the historical museum has gone through some renovations over the last couple of months, and it will be open on the 18th, which is the Saturday, 10 to noon. So if you've not seen the historical building, please stop by, check it out, and see the wonderful restorations that have been done on the building. We also had a very successful run with the antique show. I understand that the revenues are actually up from last year, so things went very well for everybody that attended, and it seems as though everyone really liked the hors d'oeuvres on Friday night, so that'll probably be a repeat next year. And lastly, stay tuned for more information about our celebration of the 696 opening, the 25th anniversary, which will be coming in January.
Do we have a date?
We do, and I forgot to write that out.
Yeah, January.
Is that right?
15.
January 15. That's it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Kuziak, recreation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a few dates coming up associated with Halloween. We have the toddler Halloween party, which will be 10:00 AM at Four Ridge. It's always a good time for the little ones. And then the following day, on October 26th, at the DPW yard in Flynn Field, we'll have our annual Halloween hayride through town. A lot of activities associated with that for youngsters, always a good time as well. And then the following day, if you haven't had enough Halloween by then, we are also having a kids' Halloween party, and that'll be at 6:00 PM at Four Ridge. So a good opportunity to get your Halloween spirit on in advance of the actual 31st. Just a heads up on the Women's Club, will have their community dinner on November 7th. That'll be from 5:30 to 7:30. That'll also be at Four Ridge. You can get your tickets at City Hall. And an update, this is regarding the renovations at Gainesboro Park. Of course, I hope you've all heard about the generous donation by the Pleasant Ridge Foundation. They've paid for some very needed renovations at Gainesboro Park. We've accomplished much down there. The interior and exterior of the building have been painted, the roof has been repaired, the lighting, an exterior drinking fountain will be added, and restroom fixtures are soon to go in. We're also looking to issue access cards. The technology and the components have been installed, and in the beginning of November, the hope is to issue access cards so all Pleasant Ridge residents would be able to access that building come November. Another exciting component of that project is a play structure that was also purchased by the Pleasant Ridge Foundation. Those components have been purchased, and weather permitting, will be installed in the coming weeks. And as always, we invite you to attend our next scheduled recreation meeting, which is Wednesday, October 29th at 7:00 PM, where I'm sure one of the topics will be the improvements to Gainesboro, Flynn Field, and the other parks in the community. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Foreman, committee liaison.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a few updates from the Ferndale School District. The first one is a story of heartbreak and eventual success. As a result of the August storms that the superintendent told us about when he was here, I think in August, there was some flooding in different school buildings, and some critical computer equipment was destroyed. A critical district server that held all the teachers' data from years and years of all their lesson plans and everything was lost. So usually this is backed up by a system, and you can restore the data later, and it's no problem, but sadly, this was not the case. There were no backups available, so all of that information was gone. Teachers were crushed, heartbroken, years and years of work amassed, all gone. So what did the district do about it? Well, there's no way to get that information back, but they kind of turned lemons into lemonade a bit, and they turned this into a success story. They brought in an outside IT consultant, and they've kind of decided to hire them because of the success that they've seen from this group that's come in and done some consulting for them. They're called Oakland Schools, and they came to the last board meeting, and they were actually hired on, and they're replacing the onsite IT staff for savings of over $40,000 per year for the first three years. What have they done? They are implementing new systems that are saving a great deal of money. They're selling off unused equipment that just was purchased and sitting accumulating and not used, so they've already found a great deal of efficiencies, and they're doing backups now. So all that stuff is in there. Of course, the teachers have to repopulate the data, and that will be a lot of work, a lot of hard work, but in the end, we'll have a better, more solid system for the teachers and the whole staff of the district, and we'll save a lot of money in the process. So efficiencies are good. Next, I'll talk about homecoming. Karen Toomey talked about it a little bit. This was on October 3rd. A few of us were there. I think it was a great event. It was a tailgate party. There were inflatable toys for the kids to play on, rock wall, food trucks, of course, Treat Dreams boot truck, the dream machine was there, so that was especially good for me. The game itself went very well for the Ferndale Eagles. They won 37 to nothing against the Phoenix of Pontiac. There was some rain for a few minutes, it was questionable, but it turned around and it was just fine. Finally, the district is going to be starting up their new website, an improved website so it's easier to find information. We're looking for this to happen in the coming week, if not this week, the following week. And then a couple notable events. This Saturday, October 18th, is the All District Fall Festival. This takes place from 11 to 3 at JFK Elementary. There are a variety of fun activities, namely the haunted hallway. I can't tell you what the theme of the hallway is this year, it's different every year. I've been threatened with mummification, so I'll just tell you it's going to be extremely spooky and scary for the kids. And again, it's from K through 6. This coming Monday is a school board meeting at 7:00 PM at Harding. Tuesday, November 4th, of course, is Election Day, no school. And Friday, November 8th, is a second annual Just for Kicks. Now, this is an adult talent slash variety show that'll take place at The Loving Touch in Ferndale at 7:00 PM. The proceeds from this benefit the JFK Camp program. Last year, $2,400 was raised, or just under that, and the adult Last year, $2,400 was raised, or just under that, and the adults, the parents of the schools, the school children can perform in this and put on the best show they can, and everyone comes and participates, and there's an entry fee, of course, and everyone has a lot of fun. The camp program at the school is basically to promote the outdoor education aspect of the open program. And they have a few different rotating themes, My Michigan, My Country, My Earth, they rotate these themes every year, and these are programs that are planned out by the parents of the kids and then overseen by the faculty of the schools. So this is a different dynamic that is brought forth by this open program. And that's my update for this month.
By the way, is there a full play this year?
I did see something.
We have heard nothing.
I saw something on the calendar when I was looking up for this meeting.
I've heard.
There's a play, but I don't have details. Sorry.
All right.
Karen's calling.
Next time.
Yes, I'll tell you how it was.
Thanks a lot. Thank you. Any other comments? No. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the following consent agenda, of which we have four items. One is consideration of the minutes of the regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, September 9th, 2014. The second is consideration of the monthly dispersment report. The third is a resolution recognizing October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the Gilda Club, and if you notice, there's a lot of pink on the front just for acknowledging that. And finally, the resolution designating city manager James Bruckman as the Act 51 Street Administrator for the City of Pleasant Ridge. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I move the consent agenda be approved as recommended.
A second?
A second.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, consideration of the appointment of Mr. Kevin Nowak as the Pleasant Ridge Police Chief.
Thank you. You know, Sergeant Nowak, hopefully soon to be Chief Nowak, has been serving as the acting chief since our prior chief's retirement. I saw Carl here earlier, but at the end of June, and I'm very happy to report, and there's never a doubt in our minds, Kevin has done a fantastic job in his time, and we have no reservations offering him the job of full-time chief of police. He's been here for eight years in town, and he's, I think, well-known and well-liked among our residents. Everyone I've talked to said nothing but good things to say about him, and that's our residents, that's fellow law enforcement professionals in here and elsewhere. So with that, I offer you confirmation of his appointment to chief of police.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Kevin Nowak as the Pleasant Ridge Police Chief?
Mayor, I move that the appointment of Mr. Kevin Nowak as the City of Pleasant Ridge Police Chief be approved as recommended.
Is there a second?
A second.
Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Next item is the consideration of the oath of office to Police Chief Kevin Nowak.
It's nice to have you all come in the room.
They were keeping the baby quiet. I'm sure you didn't hear them.
Hi, Kevin Nowak.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Pleasant Ridge Police Chief.
The Pleasant Ridge Police Chief.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you. If I could take a moment, I want my mom to step up here for a minute.
I'm not his mom.
I had actually planned to put this part of it off till the very end of my, I think, my acceptance speech and thank you speech, but as you notice, I wasn't wearing a badge, and there's a reason for that. It was way back in 1979, when I was just graduated from high school and was trying to figure out what I wanted to do in life, my mom saw an ad in the paper for Dearborn Heights Police Cadet, goes, "You should go do that," and I'm like, "I don't know if I want to do that." She goes, "You're already enrolled in college in criminal justice," because I had an interest in it, and she goes, "No, you should go." I'm like, "Mom, I'm too young, they're never going to hire me," whatever, so she goes, "No, go, you go, you need insurance and stuff." "You can't be on your dad's insurance here around 18:00." So I'm like, "All right, I'll go."
Like Starsky and Hutch.
The truth is out. It was actually crocking tubs, too. So she made me go, and I applied. When I went to get the application, they had an in basket and an out basket, the apps were there, and I went to the Dearborn Heights City Hall, and there's a whole big pile of filled-out applications, and the clerk had walked away, so while I was filling it out, I started looking, and I'm like, "Man, there's no way I'm going to get in." There's people with bachelor degrees or inexperienced, and I'm 19, I'm in my first semester of college, whatever. Came home, I told her, I go, "I don't think it's going to go well." And she goes, "No, you'll do great, I know, you'll do great," or whatever. And I got hired along with a couple of the guys that are here right now. Former Chief Carl Siskowski was one, Mike Colesard, who's hiding around the corner, was another. So without her prodding me and making me go, I don't know at the time if I had the fortitude or the guts to go through with it, but she gave me the incentive and the confidence and everything to go, so that's why I brought up, and I'd like her to pin my badge on me today. Yeah.
Tell them what's on your ass, you really feel.
I took my vest off, Mom, so don't. Does anybody have blood type O?
We got it.
Positive or negative?
Or negative. There we go.
Could I indulge a few more minutes? I have a few people to thank, obviously. First of all, I'd like to thank city manager James Bruckman for the opportunity. So far, it's been an absolute pleasure working for and with him, and I look forward to working with him and all of you. Segue into the next part. Is it moving the city forward in a positive direction to give the best services to our residents, our business, and the people that visit the community? I'd also like to thank my coworkers, many of them are hiding behind, go back there if you step out.
Only Jay.
Jay's the one that caught larceny. God, good police work. Many of them have been here longer than I. They've been nothing but supportive of me throughout the whole process, and I can say that many days, I mean, I look forward to coming to work in that because they make it that way. So you should be, I mean, I'm proud to work with them and call my coworkers and my friends, and I think we're all proud of the job that they do here, so kudos to them. I'd like to thank all the residents that I've met throughout the years and the ones I'm going to meet, I'm sure now, coming in the office. I noticed some of them are here that normally don't attend commission meetings, that have been very supportive of me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glenn Bennett and his wife Nancy, thank you, and all of you people that I look forward to seeing on a daily basis, thank you for everything that you've done and the support that you give me over the years. I'd like to thank other department members that are here, retired Sergeant Michael Bunning is here, who works for Berkeley now, along with Lieutenant Mike Crum of the Berkeley Police Department. They can now, thank you for your support. Chief Sullivan, thank you, working with you. Business owners, Sonny from Sunoco is here along with Frank, who you might not recognize without a hat on. I know I didn't.
He looks stylish tonight.
I know I didn't, I had to do a double take. I have a few friends here that I'd like to introduce and thank. One of them, I'll start, his name is David Harvey. When I went to Garden City, he was a brand-new spanking patrolman in 1984 December. They assigned me to a field training officer, and it was David Harvey. And he's sitting right here right now, he's right there. I worked with Dave for many years, every chance we had to partner up, we would volunteer to go together. I could regale you with many, many stories, many I can't, but many I could. But Dave is, went on to become the chief of police in Garden City, also the city manager of Garden City, who's the chief at Wayne County Metro Airport for a short time. Excuse me. And he's now the executive director of M. Coles, which is the Michigan Coalition of Law Enforcement Training. Need my water. It's easy. And that's responsible for pretty much all the training and standards and everything that goes on state mission. Roughly, he's in charge of about 20,000 policemen. He answers the governor's night.
For a little while.
Yeah, for a little while. That's it right there. One of the things I can tell you that, working with him, goes back to the mom thing, when we were partnered, many times we'd wind up either at his parents' house or my parents' house for dinner. And no matter how many good stories we would have or whatever, especially his mom, and Dave and his family are from Kentucky, so his parents had quite the southern drawl, we would get the, keeping us grounded. We couldn't become too full of ourselves, whether it be at my parents' house or Dave's parents' house. One of the fondest memories I have is, not all the cool police stuff, but listening to our parents give us advice about life and how we should act. So thank you, Dave, for being here. Tony Adal is next to him. He retired from Inglester. I've known him also 25, 30 years, again, more stories. I know that Tony saved Dave and I's butt once in a big bowling alley bar brawl where we went around a corner, and there were probably 50, 60 people fighting, and it was Dave and I alone. Tony jumped out of the car. He was a police explorer cadet-type thing, which was a part of the Boy Scout program, and he jumped out, jumped in the fray, and actually saved our butts until the rest of the help got there. So, and you could count it, he could be 200 miles away, and he'd know you could help, he'd show up. You knew Tony would do that. The other guys, they're hiding behind.
Oh, yeah.
My buddy from Garden City, Sergeant Robert Orgo is hiding around the corner. He's one of my best friends in the entire world, a guy I lean on for advice, a guy that I punt with and do everything with. He won't, he won't appear, but he's hiding back there around the corner. Moving on quickly, my family is here, my son Kevin is sitting right here in the front, my daughter Delia, my other daughter Hannah, my daughter-in-law Brittany, her son Brayden, and last but not least, my better half, my fiancee Kathy, who really keeps me grounded, who, for three months, she kept saying, "You may be the boss at Pleasant Ridge, but you're not the boss at home." So in the back, in the corner there, being, hiding out, is my brother and his wife Colleen, my sister-in-law, who's more like my sister than my own sister is. And I, again, my brother, nothing but supportive, and I couldn't ask for a better brother for guidance and help. And last but not least, you met my, oh, I miss Carl's mom's here, too. Chief Siskowski's mom, who's also been a part of our family for a number of years, she came, that's her sitting next to my mom there. Thank you, Jenny, for coming. And then last but not least, you already heard the story about my mom, and I might have to go on, but without her, I wouldn't be here right now, so. I hope I didn't miss anybody. I got Carl. Anyway, I'd just like to say thank you for this opportunity. Appreciate it. I hope I don't let you down, I'm going to do my best not to. I've tried to do good so far and continue with that, okay? So thanks for indulging me.
Everybody but your sister enjoyed that. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of the report on the Pleasant Ridge Community Pool 2014. Man, the best part of that one. You don't want to hear about the pool. 2014 pool season, Scott.
All right. Well, thank you. She really got to everybody. Glad to hear me.
I thought you had a big audience.
So I would like to congratulate Chief Nowak in front of everybody that's left here and the audience, so it's good to have him starting in the full capacity. So moving on, we're going to have a quick report here on the 2014 pool season. In a nutshell, it was a slower season at the pool, not necessarily because of temperatures, but just weather in general. It was a rainy, wet summer, basically, so we have attendance figures from the last, since 2009. You can see that 2014 was our lowest in the last six years and actually the lowest numbers we've had since the pool opened.
It was cold.
It was just, like I said, it was rainy, it was, actually, last summer's average temperatures were colder, but rain and just gloomy weather was a factor. So we had 12,000 residents come through the doors, 2200 guests, and 426 other admits are employees, and there's swim team members and the like that account under those. Average temperature over the last six years there, you can see, 2010, 11, and 12, we had some very warm average temperatures, and the last two years have been less than stellar for temperature-wise, but there's a direct correlation on attendance and temperature. You can see the 2010, 11, and 12, our attendance numbers match that chart almost, you can see. Hotter it is, more visitors it is.
It's still hard to believe that warmer.
I know, I was, I double-checked my math on it, but that was it, it was just, it was weird, because last year, we had, we had way, a lot more 90-degree days. This year, we only had two during the summer. Last year, I believe, we had, we had seven of 90 or higher, but it's, some of the colder days can really throw off your average, if you have a day that's only 59, it can just mess the average up. Because the way the season was, I put this little chart together here about precipitation measured hinges, and you can see how that, how that August of this year really was crazy. Like 4.5 of those 7.2 were in the...
Six hours.
Yeah, it was in the one day, so you can see where that was lie in with the average. The last bar on each of those charts is the average for those months, so it's, it was just, it was a crazy summer for rain and things like that. So we did try a couple of different things at the pool this year. One of them was adults, we had adult-only nights, and we had, we had two of those, and unfortunately, the weather wasn't the greatest those two nights that we, we held those, but the one night we did hold in conjunction with adult-only swim bingo at the pool, and you can see, there's a photograph of a bingo outside, and we had about 20 to 25 players, and it was a, it was a fun night, and we'll hope to be able to try this again next year with the adult-only nights and... And we'll hope to be able to try this again next year with the adult-only nights, and possibly add one or two more, so we can try to grow that program. It seems like people wanted to come, it just, mother nature wasn't necessarily cooperating with us. Contaminations, I'm proud to say, again, zero contaminations this summer. This is our fourth consecutive summer with zero contaminations, and I would put, I'd wager anything to say there's not another pool in the state, or possibly even the country that has a public facility that is able to say that. There, the staff watches kids, we know the people, the last 10 minutes of every hour is a reason that we make the kids get out of the pool, more or less to go to the bathroom, not so that adults can have their 10 minutes of their own time in their pool, but the kids get out of the pool, the entire pool, even the zero depth, go to the bathroom, take a break, and it's, it seemed to have really worked, since we started that, make them get all the way out of the pool, it's really, really made a difference. So, that is one, one thing we're really happy, because contaminations mean you close, they cost money, and I was, I was telling Jim earlier that there's a couple cities that we've heard of that if they find out, or if they know who caused the contaminations, they send bills to the user, because, you know, it can be upwards of $600 to shock the pool, recirculate the water, all that, to get back up after contamination, so we're not, we're not quite at that point, but like I said, we don't have, we don't have those problems. But it is, it is something that you have to deal with when you're talking about a public, a public pool facility.
Will baby boots care?
Safety, safety is their top priority at the pool. There were no serious incidents this summer, and, you know, we always have a scraped knee or a banged nose, or, you know, somebody slips and falls on the deck because they're running and they're not supposed to, but we had no, no major incidents where EMS had to be called or anything, and that's, again, I want to say, probably the fifth summer where we haven't had to have the EMS called or anything like that, and over our 11 seasons, that's, we've only had to have, have them come out once. So, we are, we are proud to have a safe facility, and the staff is proud of that, and it shows, and we have weekly trainings for the lifeguards, they're required to come, and I think that really shows, and having a swimming community helps too, and swim lessons are strong, swim team is strong, so people know how to swim, and you don't have as many incidents. So, you know, I'm pleased, I was pleased with the operation for the season this year. As always, it's a tremendous challenge for the pool, along with everything else that we have going on over at the community center, but it is, it is fun, I enjoy, you know, having the staff there, and being able to interact with them, and somewhat hope to guide them into the future. I tell a lot of the staff that now I've had people that are, and one, a couple of our people are starting law school, finishing law school, almost done with medical school, that have worked as lifeguards at the pool, so it's, I'm proud to be able to have a little, you know, influence on their lives, and be able to create upstanding citizens for the future, so. We will see everybody at the pool on May 22nd, that is the earliest possible day that we can open with the way the calendar falls, and of course, that'll be weather-dependent, but the first day we have people, I think if it was snowing, we'd have people on the first day at the pool, so. Any questions from any of the commissioners?
I have a question.
Okay.
Do we have a date set, or is it sure that we'll have a pull or plunge this year?
It is not set, or it's not sure, we would love to be able to have that, though, that's all about weather too. If we would have had, if we have five days of 80 degrees, you know, even if it's 80 flat, the water just will not be cold, it naturally heats up. As it is, I think we had a day of about 82, just a couple days before the plunge, and it raised the temperature of the water, I think, two or three degrees. So, if, if we're able to, we're able to do that, and the water is chilly enough, we would, we would do that the Friday before the auction. So hopefully, hopefully that's the case, and I guess we can talk, and we can do it either way, if we want to do it, even if the water's not super cold, but I think it was a, I think it was a fun time for the people that showed up, and nice little event.
Thank you.
Any others? Great, thank you.
I would just say, you know, on behalf of the commission, and my family certainly, who, you know, probably used the pool, they did, I know we'd use the pool a lot, I just wanted to thank yourself and Bridget, and definitely the entire staff for making it such an important part of our daily lives, but also knowing that it's in such reliable hands, and that you all care so much about it, it really becomes, you know, a comfortable place for our family to spend, you know, pretty much every day during the summer. So thank you, and to, you know, the hard work that you do, and Bridget and the staff, you know, I think, you know, year after year, you guys do a fantastic jobs.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A little better weather next year?
Yeah, hopefully.
All right. The next item is consideration of the resolution authorizing the city manager to issue purchasing cards on behalf of the city of Pleasant Ridge with Fifth Third. Jim?
Yeah, Amy wrote the memo on this one, so I'm gonna let Amy tell you about it.
Basically what this is, is a resolution, again, authorizing the city manager to issue purchasing cards on behalf of Pleasant Ridge. Purchasing card acts, basically the same as a credit card. The city is currently using an American Express credit card, which is not earning us any kind of reward or rebate, and with Fifth Third, the MasterCard program will offer us a rebate based on our spending, so it's gonna give us a little bit of money back, and we also have the opportunity to have any annual fee waived, which is not an option with American Express. By going to the MasterCard network, we can actually, it gives us a larger power to use that at other facilities, some places won't take American Express. We can actually move some of our accounts payable onto the P-card or the procurement card program, things such as printing legal ads, or utility services, and we're looking at some of our larger vendors to maybe move towards acceptance of the purchasing card, so that accounts payable can actually be reduced, we're not cutting the, you know, the vast amount of checks that we're cutting right now, and that frees up city staff time to work on other projects, instead of taking time out to, you know, code through that AP. It usually takes a good day, day and a half to get through the whole AP process, so. What we're requesting is the city commission authorize the city manager to be able to issue purchasing cards through Fifth Third.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Your honor, I move that the resolution authorizing the city manager to issue purchasing cards or P-cards on behalf of the city of Pleasant Ridge, approved as recommended.
Do I have a second? Second? May we have a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Chrisyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is city manager's report.
Yes, I actually have quite a bit to update you on this evening. The first thing I would, I would add, on the subject of P-cards, is this is actually a program that became available to us when we signed up and joined the Mitten, the Michigan Inter-Governmental Trade Network. And this was a cooperative contract that the Mitten communities had created with Fifth Third to create this purchasing card program. So when we joined Mitten, we became eligible to take advantage of that, so it's just, I think, an example of, you know, how we're trying to use some of the tools that are available to us. In case anyone hasn't heard, we're having Milage Information Open House Workshop this Wednesday and next Wednesday. Allohu. You may have heard about them, I don't know, but we would much rather err on the side of repeating ourselves over and over and over again, than having anybody not hear about them. All of the fact sheets about the Milage requests are on the website. I know some of our commissioners have been going around knocking door to door with those fact sheets, they'll be available at the open house. If you have any questions, we'll all be there, and available to talk, to answer the questions. There's gonna be about a 20-minute presentation at 7:00, and it is an open house format, so you can come and go as you please. We'll be there until 8:30, or, you know, till the last person leaves. So, you know, if you can make it at 8:10 and have some questions, come on in at that point, it'll be just fine, and we will have cookies, and that's what we're doing, so have no fear. I want to update you on a couple of our, I guess, cost savings measures that we've been taking. Last month, during the meeting, Scott actually had pictures of the LED lights that went in at the parking lot over in the community center. So those have been there now for a month. That was six days into the billing cycle for that month, so about 20% of that billing cycle for September was on, was with the old lights. But our electricity bill over at Four Ridge was $240 lower this year compared to last year. So, you know, early returns on those lights are pretty, pretty good savings right off the bat. Now, you know, we've got a little bit of signal and noise, because year-to-year comparisons, you know, there's more to it than just the lights in the parking lot, so we'll continue to monitor that, but right now, we're probably looking at a 16 to maybe 20-month payback on those lights, then at that point, we'll just be saving money every month with those. So, real happy with how that's turned out, and looking forward to continuing with the retrofit of all of our outdoor lights to LEDs. The city's health care plan is renewing on December 1st, and one of the things that the citizens advisory committee recommended, that we've been pursuing, is looking at ways to save costs on our health care. We're a small group, which is under 50 employees, and under the Affordable Care Act, there have been 60 to 80% cost increases for employers that we've been seeing, but we've managed to actually reduce the city's cost for employee health care, while at the same time offering care, or offering a plan that is comparable to what we offered before. There are some changes in that plan, but we're gonna save about $12,000 a year on health care costs for the city, so there's some savings that we've realized. One thing everyone should be aware of, is there will be some changes coming to the phones at City Hall, because we are transitioning away from the old copper lines, and we're going to VoIP, that's Voice Over Internet Protocol, where it's phones over the internet, it's like Vonage. Because of that, we're gonna save probably $900 a month on our phone charges. So, that transition will be happening probably in November, after the elections. We'll be sending out communications on that, because we'll be splitting the phone numbers at City Hall, so you'll have a police phone number, and then you'll have a City Hall phone number. So, the 2900 number will, will be the police number. If you look at the police booth out there, it's on the police booth, it's 2900, so we figured we'll let them keep it. And then City Hall, we don't know yet, probably be 2901. So, everyone should be aware of that, we'll be sending out notifications. If you call 2900 looking for City Hall during the transition period, we'll get those calls to City Hall, either through an option, but when you call City Hall with this new police and City Hall side, you won't have a phone tree when you try to call City Hall anymore. So you'll, you'll get back to talking to a person during business hours, which is what we would prefer to do. So that'll be good, and saving money there, $900 a month is about $10,000 a year on phone charges, so that's pretty good. We're starting to add up these savings, and I think make some real progress on the cost-cutting side of things, which, come to the Milage Open House Workshop, and you can see how this all fits together with our, our plan to stabilize the city's finances. There was a presidential declaration of disaster, disaster declaration for the August 11th storms. If any residents have not heard about this, and it's on our website, go to www.citypleasanridge.org, and on the front page, there's a link to information about the federal disaster declaration. Basically, it opens up the possibility that homeowners who suffered damage because of that storm, because of the basement backup, may qualify for some federal assistance. You can get to it through our website, but you can also go directly to wwwdisasterassistance.gov, and register right online, FEMA will set up an appointment with you, and, you know, we have, we have heard about homeowners, some homeowners getting grants or reimbursement from the federal government, so that seems to be coming through in some cases. Of course, it's all specific to the damage you suffered, and some other things that the feds do, we have nothing to do with it, don't call us, call the feds. But on that same, because of that same disaster declaration, the city is actually eligible for public assistance. So, the extraordinary costs that we incurred for cleanup, taking all of that garbage away, you know, I think we ran something like 14 weeks' worth of garbage in one week, because of all of that occurred. Basically, it was $18,000 worth of extra costs, and we, the city, are eligible for about 85% reimbursement from the federal government, so that's very helpful for the public finances as well. I'm sure Ferndale is probably looking at a little bit more, you guys had a little more damage than we did. I already talked about the planning commission ordinances on October 27. We have an exciting study that's starting right now, focusing on Woodward Avenue. And this is through the WA3, the Woodward Avenue Action Association, they're coordinating this planning process, but you may be aware that there was a complete street study for Woodward that went from downtown all the way out to Pontiac, paid for by WA3. There's also the Regional Transit Authority's Alternatives Analysis, looking at options for transit on Woodward, again, from downtown Harp Plaza all the way out to Pontiac. Both of those studies were a little disappointing for Pleasant Ridge, because they got to the Woodward Underpass, the ditch, and kind of jumped to the north part of the underpass, and just kept going with their recommendations. Basically, you know, this is the, one of the, I'll say the hardest, I think it's the hardest stretch to figure out what to do for transit for complete streets, because you've got 696, Woodward, and underpass, surface streets, and interstate on-ramps and off-ramps, all happening right here. And not only that, but we have our business district, which is along Woodward, which is impacted by all of this, and it's a big problem, and, you know, when you're doing a study that's 26 miles long, the consultants, you know, have limited time and resources, I guess, and so they basically skipped over, and so we were looking at going, well, what? You know, does this mean for us? So, the WA3 has helped us, and is doing the majority of the funding for a specific study for our stretch. It starts at the ditch and ends at the ditch, where it goes down and comes up, and that's the entire study. I've been working with the WA3's, with the WA3 staff, and, and we have, basically identified our own consultants for this, so we're not relying on M.DOT's consultants, we're the same ones who did those complete street studies. We're advocating for ourselves, we're, we have some national consultants who, you know, they are transportation engineers, they're not road engineers, so if these guys can't help us figure out how to make this better, I don't know who can. So, that's actually gonna be starting in November, they're gonna be here doing some fieldwork and initial investigation. These guys are transportation engineers and complete streets experts, so that's gonna be their fieldwork. Stay tuned, because in February, they're gonna be coming back, and at that point, there will be public meetings, public process, they're gonna come back with alternatives, they're gonna come back with ideas, and then present those for public review and public comment. So, probably February, we'll, we'll get the word out as it gets closer, but I think this is a very exciting study, and, you know, for us to come up with our own vision for Woodward, to be able to advocate for that when projects come up, is a very important thing. Another thing, if you live on the east side of town, save the date, we'll be sending out notices of this soon, but on November 20th, over at Four Ridge, we're gonna be having a town hall meeting, basically. There's a couple of longstanding issues over on the east side with parking on the streets impacted by the business district, and as you may know, we are also getting ready to do an alleyway project, so we want to talk about some design options for the alleyway project. There's no, we weren't able to get anybody to bid for the fall, so we're gonna be doing a spring construction. So we have the ability to take a step back and look at some, some options for what we do at the alleyway, specifically from 696 down to Devon Shiger, is the one that we're looking to rebuild. The DDA has approved the expenditure to rebuild that in the spring, so we'd like to talk about that at the town hall meeting as well. So that's why we're calling it an east side town hall meeting, because these are east side issues that relate with the alleys and the business district. So, if you live on the east side, and you've ever been annoyed because there's parking on your street, or because driving through the alley is maybe not the greatest experience that it could be, please plan on joining us on November 20th at 6:30 PM, because we're gonna be focusing on trying to solve some of these issues. That's all, that's all that I have for this month. I know Scott has a couple things that he's gonna update us on as well.
Thank you again. So, leaf collection is upon us, you can see some of the leaves are starting to fall, so I just wanted to give a short update on that. We start collecting on the street when the majority of the leaves have fallen off the trees, and all that's... You know, that's very not exact date on the calendar, but I did have a preseason meeting with the DPW supervisor yesterday. We drove around a couple of the streets, and looked at some of the traditional trees that dropped their leaves early, and many of those trees are still green, so at this point, we don't, we don't anticipate having a leaf truck on the street before, at least next Wednesday. So you can put your, if you have leaves, you can put them out in front of your house, you're not gonna get a citation, but know that they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be collected until at least next Wednesday, which is the 22nd of October. If something drastically changes in the next couple of days, we get a major frost, along with a lot of rain, and a lot of the leaves start to fall, then we can move that date up. We will place signs out on the corner of a number of the major intersections, letting you know the date of when the collection will start, put it on Facebook, eBlast, and the website also. So just a couple of friendly reminders about leaves. To help prevent damage to the equipment, please make sure there's no rocks, sod, twigs, roots, large items that the leaf machine will suck up, especially rocks. And, I mean, we've had, they've had cinder blocks in there before, just, I don't know why that is the case, but we've had some nasty stuff in the piles of leaves, and they will damage your machines, and it will cause, it causes slowdown of the process. So we ask, we ask that you don't put anything other than the leaves out there in the street. And also, please do not park your car over a pile of leaves. Your muffler and your catalytic converter under your vehicle get very hot, and it can cause a fire. I think we had one a couple of years ago, where a car parked right over a pile of leaves, and it did, it did catch on fire in the street. So it also, try to keep your cars in the driveways if you can, be considerate to your neighbors, because the leaf machine has a hard time maneuvering between cars around the streets. Cambridge update, Cambridge is 95% complete. The removal, replacement of the road and sidewalks is done. The major repair of the drainage structures are complete. All the irrigation has been repaired and is operational. The last steps include topsoil, which is scheduled to be delivered tomorrow, if Mother Nature cooperates with us, and then sod will, will be installed and is watered by the contractor for a limited period, until it takes, usually around 10 days. At that point, administration along with engineers, AEW, conduct a walkthrough of the street, and we create a punch list of any things that need to be fixed here or there, little items, a punch list, and then the contractor will address those. The last step of the project, though, will actually take place in the spring. At that time, we plan to repopulate the trees that had to be removed, or that had fallen because of the construction. And at this point, we plan to replant at least 12 trees in the area of Cambridge and Oakdale, and all along the street in the spring, and we will notify residents when that plan will take place. And as Commissioner Crizziak mentioned, I promised the Women's Club that I would, I would give another mention about their lasagna dinner, the community dinner that will be held on Friday, November 7th, at the community center, from 5:30 to 7:30. Adults are $10, children, 10 and under are $5. Tickets are available at City Hall, make sure you buy your tickets, because last year, they sold out. So they actually have a, you know, limited amount, and it helps them be able to make enough lasagna for everybody, if they have a good number ahead of time. So please, if you plan to go to that, get your tickets. And Commissioner Crizziak already updated about the playground, so it's been ordered, it should be in, in the warehouse this week, and installation will take place soon. That's weather dependent, too, we need a nice day of at least 50 degrees or higher to be able to put the surface down once the playground gets installed, so it's gonna happen very soon, I promise. Seems like so, it's such a long process, but it is, it's not something that definitely happens overnight, so. That was it for me, thank you.
Thanks. Just one other thing we wanted to ask if you would acknowledge the transition from Rodney to Nick?
Oh, I will, yes. Yeah, it was very, very sad news for, for everybody, all the staff, and I know a lot of residents that found out. Rodney Will, our DPW supervisor from Rylar, left and took another position at a, at a different company. And Larry Offa, the owner of Rylar, is, you know, always, always prepared, had another, another gentleman that he thought would fit in nicely at Ridge, and his name is Nick, and I'm not even sure of his last name, actually, I don't, yeah, I'm not sure.
Just calling him Nick.
Nick, just calling him Nick. We're on first name basis around here, we know how that is, right? So Nick has been on board for a few weeks now, and he's been, and he's done a nice job, so he's, you know, there's a, there's a learning curve for, for everybody. Rodney was here for a number of years, and just kind of knew, knew what things to do at certain times of year, and Nick has come right in and picked up, and he'll become a nice addition to the Pleasant Ridge team here, so we're happy to have him on board, and if you happen to see him around, please say hello and welcome him to Pleasant Ridge.
He was cleaning the median yesterday.
Yeah, he's, he's definitely staying busy, so.
Quick question. I know Rodney, he was very busy with all the snow clearing, he lived far away, it was really hard for him, but he did it. Where does Nick live?
Nick is, Nick lives much closer, yeah, he's, he's in the local area, so that will be a plus for, for Nick, and for us having someone that was closer. And by no means that that, even if somebody does have to come from far away, Larry always has somebody ready to go, and our snow clearing is, to put it up against anybody, they do a fine job, and we're, we'll be ready again this winter for it, so hopefully it's not as, not as bad as it was last winter, and hopefully we get the leaves up before we get some snow on the ground, so. Nick is a local, though, so that'll be nice. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just along with FEMA, FEMA's gonna be in town until the 24th of November, so you need to get your application in as soon as possible. They're doing inspections, FEMA is, but as soon as you get your information in, they've been doing the inspections, I hear, so get them in quickly.
Yeah, we're hearing within days.
You may also have gotten Sandy Levin's robo-call.
I did.
Just got it at 5:45 or something this evening, so he was making calls.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that, your honor. FEMA set up at Kulick Center in Ferndale, and we've talked to them several times, a lot of residents didn't realize, once it went presidential, there is a lot more help coming for people, and if you don't qualify, and you have your insurance paid and all that, they have the SBA, so the small business, administration is in town also, with up to $25,000 unsecured loan for residents, even though they're the SBA, they're helping residents, and that's till you get full recovery, back on your feet, at very low interest, and they got a lot of that kind of help there. So if you did apply, or thought you didn't, you got turned down, it'd be a good idea, as Commissioner said, to reapply, and there's a lot of help, and we're seeing residents that are getting full recovery and high partial recovery, so it's, it's worth going through that, and they're here, and there's also dates on what can be claimed, and those are starting to die off, and here in October, and then further into November, but businesses also. And you can get loans up to millions of dollars in a business, depending on what damage you had, at a low interest rate, so.
Wow.
They're here, they're helping.
It's all based at Kulick Center?
Yeah, they're out of the Kulick Center. You go online, you apply there, and then they'll contact you, and those, they're coming out and inspecting, if they see what the damage was, because this is not a floodplain area, so that's one of the things that was a shocker to everybody, so.
I hear they're coming out very quickly after.
They're, the whole team's in there. I set up a team, I mean, these guys come in like the military, they were in, like, eight people, a week ago Friday, they went through the building, and said, can we do this, where's this at chief, where's this, and I said, yeah, we can get you wires run, phones run, and boom. By Sunday night, they were all set up and ready to go for business at 7:00 Monday morning. So they're, they're, they're serious, and they're there to help, so, and they're really helping people, so, just so people understand, they're serious about it.
All right, the last item on the agenda is other business. Anything else from?
I have something, Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Just as a reminder, the election is November 4th. Absentee ballot applications are available now, they're on the website, or you're, come into City Hall, go on out, we'll have your ballot to you. The last day for absentee ballots will be November 1st, and you apply for those in person. I will be in the office that day, that's a Saturday, from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM, accepting applications and issuing ballots. So if you're interested in an absentee ballot, just get ahold of me at City Hall, shoot me an email, and we'll get you the application.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have three quick things. First, I'd like to make a few comments about Chief Nowak. He's not in here, he's celebrating right now, but I would like to just take this opportunity to thank him for his years of service at the City of Pleasant Ridge and its residents. Also to say that I'm extremely impressed already by his positive attitude, his responsiveness, and his can-do attitude. I look forward to this vote, this is already taking place, and I look forward to the fruition of it, and all he's gonna achieve with the City of Pleasant Ridge and the PRPD. I'm very excited about this. The next thing is a quick update. City manager and I attended a Regional Stormwater Summit on Friday, October 3rd, this was the second annual event, it took place at Lawrence Tech, and it had a lot of extra fuel this year, because of the recent flooding, of course. So since it seems like this heavy rainfall could possibly become a new norm for us, or at least more common, and the fact that our changing our drain system is kind of cost prohibitive, it's probably not gonna happen, at least not to the level that would accommodate this level of volume, or this volume of water. The emphasis now is looking at more natural methods of capturing this water, before it gets into the drain system. So we'll definitely be hearing more about this in the months and even years to come, but it's exciting to see that efforts in our region are starting to take off and build up steam, and some grassroots. Energy is being put forth for this, too, residents are getting interested in it, we saw this environmental committee here tonight, one of their focuses is sustainable gardening, preventing some of the pesticide runoff going into the sewers, so I think these types of things are gonna become more common, and that's a good thing for all of us. Finally, I'll mention something that I talked about last month, which was the PR Beautification Committee. We're gonna be meeting later this week to make our final selections of the homes that will get the awards, and there's one business for homes. So we plan to present these awards at the next city commission meeting in November. That's it.
Do I have? I just wanted to make, I was just thinking that tonight will mark the 12th time that I gabble a meeting closed. I have gabled 11 meetings open, because last, no, the first one was just a closure, I didn't get to start it. But I just wanted to say what a gratifying year it's been for me, and to thank my fellow commissioners, and also to administration, both the old Scott and Amy, and the new Jim, and Greg, welcome you. And I just want to, you know, look forward again to the November 4th election, how important it is for Pleasant Ridge. We want to see that turn out as high as can be, and it's, it's very important that we, that we support the efforts that we're putting out for Pleasant Ridge, and I invite you to come to the open houses, if you haven't already, tomorrow night and next Wednesday. And with that, I will ask for, oh.
Just a follow-up there. For the November 4th election, study upon all of the issues for the state of Michigan, because it's a pivotal year for the state as a general rule. Wherever you land your political beliefs, it's a pivotal year, so take a moment to understand all of the issues, look at all of the ballot measures. We have some of our own, but there are others on the ballot, and some important positions up for stake.
And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have support?
Support.
Is he in arms? Okay.
Yes.
Yes. We are, sir.